Hi, can you guys hear me? I have no audio.
There you go.
Thank you.
We haven't opened the meeting yet.
Ah, okay, thank you.
I just did, so you're good. Um, we have one on our agenda, we're waiting for Paul from Athens to sign in. To get going, um, but I can bring you up to date on what the plans are. The company that makes the fuel cell is offering a four K unit, a K Y unit, a cart. Without a fuel supply, but you can put it on a cart and what he's doing, the plan he's doing is putting one of those on the application for community center. Will generate hydrogen here at City Hall. Maybe expand it a little bit, you can run, right now it's set up for ten K or ten kilowatts of solar, ten kilowatts of wind, we can amp up the wind to at least forty kilowatts if we need to. It covers the, and we've got room in the plan for two more electrolyzers. Expand out a bit, but because it's all backup, we shouldn't have to do that. Um, until later. So.
Can you break this into another email?
Our plan was, as of last meeting, was to add three or four more cars.
Okay, it's a long link, so how else can I get it to you?
Keep them, um.
We've sent two of them now.
Do we need an email?
I just called them, they're working it out.
Okay.
Do you have another one I can send you?
I keep them here, see, I'll just.
Some time to press more emails to get into a personal.
They're basically portable fuel cells.
Alright.
Like a generator, four kilowatt, kilowatt generator with no fuel supply, you'd have to carry a tank with it. But the, uh, the three kilogram tanks are fifty six inches tall, or seventeen inches in diameter.
Not here, not through Zoom, not through Zoom.
And one of those would satisfy several hours.
Alright, let, uh, let me give you your.
It uses. The constant is seventy grams of hydrogen per kilowatt hour and this fuel cell uses a bit less than that, which is interesting. So, it, it sounds like it's, you know, and these are all on the market, these are all currently available, we're not asking anybody for anything, we're not looking at prototypes.
Try this, I'll just sign out, yes, I want to send it out, so.
That's what the plan is for a moment, and, and so.
I'm so sorry, uh.
We're getting on here and finalize the application itself.
Information on hydrogen does.
So that's, um, how long will one of those run? Longer you put fuel on it, I mean, the. Probably twenty five years.
Oh no, I mean as far as the.
Per tank, per tank.
You just.
Per tank, uh, three kilograms of fuel. What's the? Three kilograms?
The, the one I generated on the phone, yes. Okay, see you in a bit. Sounds good, bye. Mm-hmm, he, uh, he got the, for some reason my emails are not going through either. So then his emails are somewhere, he knows he had one of those, so I sent it to him, his personal email, and we got it, and I transported it on and.
So there's forty three, forty two kilograms or kilowatt hours worth of power in two kilograms of hydrogen. Okay. So that'll run you at, you know, one kilowatt, that'll run you four days, three days. But you can always put more tanks on it.
At one kilowatt?
At one kilowatt hour, at one kilowatt.
That's pretty low, isn't it, for?
Uh, for that building, probably not, that'll run most of that building, yeah.
Like typical house?
Typical house only uses eight hundred kilowatt hours a month.
Okay.
Nationwide.
Okay.
Um, my peak usage was thirteen hundred kilowatt hours one month, but most of the time it's less than that, and my hourly usage runs between, um, somewhere around eight point eight to one point two kilowatt, kilowatts per hour. So, a four kilowatt unit would be fine. Um, and it's, there's forty three kilowatt hour of electricity in a tank, so, more tanks, so three kilogram tanks would be fine, probably two of them enough, but two would be, we want a dozen of them having full, yeah.
I just want a regular generator to run a house, you're gonna need like a two or three KW to. Cause you need the peak.
You need the peak, uh, and these are four kilowatt, so they can peak at four, which is bigger than most generators. Um, but for, in first, like startup fridge. But for most places, um, that's more than enough to run even at peak. And you're not gonna run peak for more than a few seconds at a time.
Yeah.
So, um, you know, you could have everything running and still not use.
Can these four KW carts be daisy chinning together if you had a higher draw requirement? Um, sometimes you gotta script a load.
Sometimes you can do that, and, and, or you can add another, I'm not sure how many room there is on the cart, but you know, the, the fuel cells themselves are about eight days, so I'm sure you could put a second one on the cart.
They can stack them, uh, they can stack them as you need, or you can do series connected to the telemetry of the computer in parallel, if you want in parallel, and if you wanted to add more. You could have pretty much max one out, and you do swings on the rest, it's like running any kind of power bank. Primary is loading to the max, and your secondary is your movement. So you know, and then you add your, and you base that off of your, um, your power curve on your demand. So, initially, you know, whatever the client would want, that's how they would provide the amount of fuel that you need for that site. With what was discussed, it would be two, those mobile units will give a good range depending on where you're gonna put it. So, and they also come with fifteen foot tanks, uh, on the trailer, you can have the machine, which is the hydrogen cell, and they add a controlled, um, tank, uh, mobile tank system to it as well. So these are all gonna be on trailers? Uh, yes, the, the fuel cells will be. Individual trailers? So this one will have, this building will have its own fuel cell, doesn't mean the proposal is to have mobile trailers so we can get them on multiple sites, and they all have something versus being fixed with the numbers that we have, cause the grants, grant money's kind of starting to run in, you know, for the proposal, and it just takes too long, we need to get this done, so.
So we'll have three fixed fuel cells here at City Hall, potentially four, two potentially four, I think the current planets were two. Um, and then, uh, enough, I think they're using five tanks or maybe three tanks here on the trailer, but, and then the electrolyzer will be generating hydrogen, and there's a dryer and a presser and a few other things in there. Um, the, uh, so that will be the source of hydrogen for everybody. Once these tanks are full, they can store either in a, in a similar facility, a light there facility, in a, in a container. Um, they're, they leak before they're used, so, and then they dissipate a little bit of hydrogen, so it's gonna be. And so, the, the explosive issue is, is not really an issue. Car vehicles, accidents are a prime, are a, are a concern. Um, but for using a building is not really an issue, so.
What's that life expectancy on those, because?
On the tanks?
No, just on the whole unit itself.
Well, like I said, the, there's Paul, the, uh.
Yeah, for me, chair, we know it's here.
Last span of the, of the fuel cells, twenty, twenty five years.
Okay.
And then he just ripped out and put another one in. Um, and it's a chemical thing, it's not a mechanical issue or anything like that, there's no mechanics in it.
It isn't like a metal plate or something like that?
Well, they're, they're, they're chemically arched in there, and they're based on, on, uh, they're not charged, in other words, they don't, they're not like lithium ion, where they have a little bit of lifespan, so you don't charge them, they're just, you provide power to them and they do their thing. Um, depending on purity of the water, now, the purity of the water may cause, impure water can cause issues on, on one of the two notes, but that depends, so if you use pretty good clear water, then you're fine. Um, that's a maintenance thing.
There may have, there may have to be a reverse osmosis system attached to it, then it would have a day tank to process the amount of fuel that you need for that day if you're doing electrolyser. So, so an OR unit is just a polisher, make it cleaner, easier for it to make hydrogen for.
So, Paul, welcome.
Yeah, good day, we're finally in, I think we're, we're good now. My volume there, so I can hear you.
I was spending a few minutes to tell you why you connected, going over our current configuration plan thing.
Yeah, we can, do you want me to, I have a few slides together, if you want us to walk through kind of where we are and where we're headed?
Let's focus on what we need to get done for the grant application.
Yeah, and that's part of that as well, we can walk through the grant application if you like as well.
Okay, let's go ahead and do that then, you wanna share your screen?
Yeah, let's do that if I.
Can you share his screen?
Yeah.
No, I don't, no, I'm, hang on, uh, yeah, I should be able to.
Yeah, we didn't, we don't have any restrictions on share, um.
Okay.
Joe and Joe.
I have it up if you need me to share.
Joe, I'm sorry, sir, what's your first name?
Bob.
Bob and Joe, if you guys wanna come sit around here so you can easily see the presentation, I will get with.
Yeah, you wanna do that, Dax?
Yeah. Which may, uh.
It'll be easy, I'll be able to see you then.
Share and screen one.
Oh, Scott, you don't have the right presentation.
Oh, I do not, okay.
No, okay, hang on, no, we're, let's not start with that, let's go.
Okay.
Hang on, let me share my slide here. Dax, can you share the, the, the slides, or you don't have them, hang on, I gotta, I gotta, I gotta, let me do it.
I don't have the slides, I just have.
No, yeah, 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 let me share this.
That helped at all, everybody?
Uh, you need to, you need to unshare, Scott.
Um, stop, oop, stop share, there we go.
Okay, perfect.
I'm done, sorry.
Okay, no worries.
This needs to be in ballet, you can put this in music. Every Zoom meeting, oh, you're muted, I'm sure, you're muted.
Alright.
Hey, there we go.
Hey, going better.
Can we see that alright now?
Yeah.
Alright, excellent.
Aw.
Well, now I can see your pelican.
Oh, shoot, I moved it to the wrong screen, ah, there we go, alright, now we got it. I was trying not to look sideways when I talk, but I guess I'll look sideways when I talk, so we just.
I'll leave it to you, so you can look anywhere you want.
Oh, perfect, that, that. So, we put it together a few slides, just to walk through to, to kind of catch everyone up, to make sure everyone's up to speed of where we're at, and sort of the pieces we still need uh, by next Friday to get this grant done. So what we're talking about today is our construction grant application, um, and that really follows on the planning grant, so just to get everyone back up to speed, to the state of Oregon, the, the Department of Energy has Community Renewable Energy Grant Program, and that's what we, the city applied for, for the last round, for a planning grant, and was awarded that, and the objective of that was to create a plan and design of a reliable, resilient backup power for the Emergency Operations Center at City Hall, and so that's what that plan's done. We have drawings and a, and a, and a report that came out of that, and so our current activity now is putting together an application to seek construction funding, uh, for that very plan. So, I don't know if all of you have seen this or not, but there's a report that goes with our planning, and then a set of, a, a set of drawings that then form the basis of our construction grant, so that gives us sort of a leg up, so the only piece we need kind of in the construction grant is sort of the final, final tweaking and, and sealing of these drawings to get to the final, uh, construction, ready to construct drawings, so these drawings are I think probably, Scott, you can yell at me if I say something wrong, but they're, they're eighty five, ninety percent complete at least, you know, so they're, they're pretty much, uh, almost a construction ready set. So here's sort of the layout of what was proposed in the grant, and what we're now chasing construction dollars for, is essentially a setup that will have um, a hydrogen fuel cell at the end of it, right, which is gonna generate power for City Hall, for the Emergency Operations Center. That's gonna be driven by hydrogen, which we're gonna produce from solar panels that will be on the roof of a container that's gonna contain all the equipment out at the back of the parking lot, uh, also a small wind turbine, and potentially in the future, we can add, um, off-peak energy from the grid, because it's hydroelectric, it'll also be green if we want to up the amount of hydrogen production we have. So that's all goes into a controller system that's then gonna charge a few batteries, but basically all that's to drive the electrolyser system, which takes the city water supply that will be filtered probably through a reverse osmosis filter to deionize it, so that it's cleaner for the system, and then the power from the solar or the wind will drive the electrolyser, which will split that water into oxygen, which will be off-gassed, and, and hydrogen, which we will then compress and put into storage tanks, which can then run the hydrogen fuel cell system, uh, at City Hall. Additionally, uh, the objective is then to produce additional hydrogen that can be used for a portable generator that we haven't really shown here yet, but we'll, we'll work that into the grant, a portable generator that can be placed at the community center and run off hydrogen tanks, green hydrogen tanks that are produced here at, at City Hall, and then the idea is that it provides the opportunity for this to become a resiliency hub for the community, and it's scalable in the future and modular to build off of that, if you wanna get a couple more portable generators to support other operations, uh, uh, emergency operations, or the nice thing about the portable generators is to also allow the city to use them for events. So if you have some kind of event, uh, out in the park that you want some power at, that you don't want any noise or fume, you can use that emergency little portable generator and use it for that purpose as well. So, here's our kind of preliminary equipment list, and, and sort of the look at, uh, what some of the probable costs on that are, and this is sort of something that we're, we're refining now together with our, our partners and, and some of the suppliers like BWR, which I think we, that we're gonna try and call in today, but I don't know if they got the updated call information from me on time, but, so we, here's the pieces, right, so we've looked at having a, a ten kilowatt uh, solar panel system, a small wind turbine, which is around ten kilowatts as well, the inverter controller, the batteries, the electrolyser, hydrogen storage, and here's where we, we have to still play a little bit on what size of storage you need, which is gonna impact the amount of uh, time you have fuel for, for backup, and so that's, that's again a scalable piece, so we'll try and maximize what makes sense here in this, in this grant, but you can always add extra tanks, right? And then, and then the hydrogen fuel cell, uh, eight kilowatts covers the building here, and we'll probably do a portable eight kilowatt for the community center as well, and then the, the, the setup of prepping the site behind the parking lot to put this in, the actual, the rest of the plant, the compressor, the dryer, the reverse osmosis filtration, piping and sensors, a container to put this all in, so it's really a shipping container, right? Uh, but, uh, uh, of shipping container that will contain all these pieces, and then the engineering services for final design and construction support, and then installation commissioning, and we put a little contingency on there. So this is the original one that we had with the preliminary, like I say, we're refining these pieces of equipment now to have an equipment list that will match, you know, actual products with warranties and spec sheets, which is something that the grant asks for. Um, additionally, the, it asks for a construction schedule, and so this is a kind of our preliminary construction schedule, which shows it taking about fourteen months. I think this is probably a little aggressive on the procurement side, so we'll stretch that out a little bit, and probably looking more at a sixteen to eighteen month uh, sort of construction schedule for this. The requirement of the grant is that the construction has to start within a year of, of, of the grant being awarded, and then also that it has to be completed within three years, I think, if I remember correct, yeah. So I don't know if we wanna walk through the draft grant a little bit now, or if you want to talk a little bit about the checklist. Um, Scott, what are your thoughts, uh, on that? Scott Whitmire, sorry.
Yeah, I think we should focus on the checklist.
Okay, so let's, let's go to the checklist. Um, we, we have a whole draft of the grant that we could walk through as well. Uh, if we look at the checklist here, which is provided for the grant, we've extracted the construction and renewable, the constr, the construction grant for renewable energy and resilience, and sort of looked at all the pieces, uh, written authorization from the governing body, we need the, the letter from, uh, from city council approval, and I believe Kimberly said that on the next council meeting on the sixteenth, you'd get that official approved letter to submit. It's pretty much the same as what we have, we had done on the planning grant, that just needs approval to show that the city is authorizing pursuit of this grant. Um, detailed information about partner organizations, we have that part complete. Uh, partners, support organizations, we need a, a letter of support like we had last time from Central Lincoln, uh, PUD. Um, and then some other folks that, uh, Kimberly and I have discussed of getting some support letters from, from other, uh, members of the community and, and, uh, and people who, maybe some political folks that had attended the, the, uh, Emergency Power Solutions Rally, and so any kind of support letters, we can get in there, the main one that we need is. And so, any kind of support letters, we can get in there, the main one that we need is the one from the, the PUD, just saying that they don't object to us building sort of this microgrid, uh, system. They, they were fully in favor of the planning grant, so I don't anticipate we have, uh, any problem there. Uh, documentation from stakeholders and community groups, so we have all the sort of meetings we've had in the past, uh, put in there. Uh, feasibility with electric utilities, uh, that's sort of in light green, because it's still in, in progress, the, the calculations, but we have a lot of that from our report. Uh, major components, technologies, all these pieces are, are in there, and the section of the grant which they apply is listed. We move through this quite lengthy checklist, uh, you can see that most of the, the pieces are complete. Um, the statement of compliance with actual, with, with, uh, local regulations is something, again, that the city will just have to provide that they will comply with all local regulations, or that the project will be done in compliance with those. Uh, just as part of the city approval, and also the support from the utility.
We probably have to add another, we probably have to go to the planning commission too, woman. You get their approval?
You'll never get their approval of how we submit this construction grant.
Uh, no, that's part of the, the, the construction process is that after the grant has come in.
They have to comply, you're right, they have to comply with legal zoning codes.
Exactly, yeah. And so, uh, the, the other piece that we're working on right now is the documentation that the system will operate for at least five years. And so we'll probably need some conversation, uh, Kimberly, with, with your public works folks, with Brady and others, about, um, about how we might make sure that we show that we have people that can operate it. One of the nice things about this type of system, though, is that because of the telemetry in it, it can and will be remote monitored by the, the supplier, um, so they can provide real-time support that way too. Um, it's pretty low maintenance, uh, in general, and that real-time support will be able to help the city as they, they track it as well. So, we just have to show a little bit of a plan there, that there's folks that can be trained up and, and handle that. Um, we're getting warranty information on each of the components, um, and, and, and the specs on those components to also, uh, show this sort of the, the ability of this thing to, to be robust enough that it's, they're not, the, the state's not spending money on something that's not gonna work in a year.
Paul, before you go wrong for that, so, just, just one, one of the things we wanna make sure of is, for example, we got this top science system, one of the common complaints I heard is we can't get parts. Somebody to work on, split this specialized. So my question, I think, would be, what is, what happens if something does break and we can't get parts? What is our lead time in, um, having something fixed? I mean, are the, these parts would be fairly, we've done it to, uh, other mechanical things? Or are we gonna have to call in special people to fix these, assuming it gets to the point of where our guys can't handle? Because they're not gonna be able to handle mass work on it, they're gonna be, they're gonna be the ones that are just maintaining it, babying and the, and the interaction. But when you're talking about when something fails, um, how does that work? Because are we talking about lead times? Are we talking, we have to order from East Coast? Do you know?
Yeah, I think, I think th- there's sort of two pieces to that, right? So normal operation of the system i- is pretty, we, someone can be trained to do that, it's not a huge lift, there's not a bunch of exercising, uh, generator firing up every week, like a diesel, checking that the diesel feels good, right? All of that stuff sort of self-contained, and you know, inspect the tanks every five years, that sort of thing. But yeah, there's some, the specialized parts, like the fuel cell or something, if something goes wrong with one of those, that would have to be the manufacturer that would deal with that. Now, the nice thing again is most of these components are designed to not catastrophically fail, right? In the sense that if one of the stacks goes bad in the fuel cell, the neighboring one keeps to run, so you might have a little drop-off in power production, but it continues to run, and it'll send a message back saying that, hey, one piece of it's not performing completely, right? So a little bit of that is something we can work with the, the manufacturers and the vendors on the sort of monitoring of that equipment to, if, if those pieces start to perform below optimum, it sort of flags almost like the, you know, the automatic time to replace your filter in the fridge kind of thing that some people have on new fancy fridges, right? That email, emails them, it's time to replace the filter. So, we can set up things like that for the kind of more complex parts. The other stuff is, is, is like I say, it's, it's not something, the electrolyzer, the fuel cell, that you would maintain yourself, right? It's, it's sort of like, you're not going to go inside the motherboard on your laptop and fix it yourself. You're gonna let the, the manufacturer fix tha- that, right? So there, the connections and the pipes and the things that are around it, yeah, the, you know, that kind of stuff is, is fine. The water supply, maybe some of the compressor and the, oh, most filters and stuff, we can have local mechanical fix, but the actual fuel cell itself i- is not something that you, you, you can or would fix anyway. It would be something that would go to the manufacturer. But like I say, the nice part of that for lead time on that would be the fact that, you know, it would do, it usually gives some kind of notification of that, and this sort of a, a, a time length, right? If you run it for X number of hours, then it's time to have, have some components replaced or recycled in it.
Okay, thank you. Anything along the lines of that one, or just, okay?
Training, talk about training.
Sorry?
This, this Joe, um, talk about, uh, how we localize training for the specialist individuals to monitor and maintain it. Uh, that question comes up a lot. So, uh, do you have a formal or informal training plan or program they could go through to familiarize with startup and shutdown components, like checklist, you know, pre-flights, that type of thing?
Yeah, and that would be, that, that, maybe we'll make that a little clearer, that'd be sort of part of the, the O and M of this, right? That, that, uh, after commissioning, that, that someone would be trained up, uh, on it. And like I say, and it's sort of, these things are usually live, connected to the manufacturer so that they can monitor things as well. But, yeah, let's make sure that we will mention that and put something together that is sort of a, a training O and M checklist manual for, for operation. Hang on, I'm making myself a note, so I don't forget that. Um, then if we go down this, the detailed construction plan, uh, I showed you that schedule already, and, and we already have the, the draft plans that were prepared as part of the, the planning grant. So, there we go, it starts within twelve months and finishes within thirty-six months. Um, like I say, we're looking at probably a fourteen to eighteen month construction schedule, we'll polish that a little bit to make sure that it all, all makes sense, um, procurement time, and we'll provide that with the, with the grant application. Um, the other thing down here again is the, the same discussion of the specs and warranty equip, uh, on the equipment, and we will, we're gathering those right now. Um, the other thing that it asks about, which is a little bit tricky, and I, maybe you can help with some wording or, or thoughts on this, is that there's a job creation aspect that they ask to, right? Um, that they want some kind of jobs report attached to this. And, and I, I mean, it's not a job creation thing initially, right? That it, it's gonna use someone part-time from the city's crew to, to watch it, know how to learn it, learn how to work it and monitor it and run it in an emergency. But it's not, and, you know, a couple of jobs, maybe when we're installing to put a pad down or something, but it's not really a job creation mechanism, in that sense, it's a, the way I look at it is, is a prevention of job loss during an emergency, right? By supporting the community, but it does have potential down the road for workforce development kind of thing that I know. Um, Joe, you and I have talked about at some point, you know, there's, Depot Bay really becomes this, this hub, this, this, uh, pilot study, the success for the, for the region, that there's, you know, potential here for, for that to become an opportunity to, to build out jobs along this line and part of the, the green energy economy there, a- and grow, and grow that aspect through it. Um, I guess, uh, um, my thought is just to kind of work around that like that, unless the city has some goals or ideas of how to, how to address that.
We don't. I mean, all we're thinking about is how we're gonna just manage it the way that it is now. We're certainly not looking at any of us moving into hydrogen cells and.
Yeah, I wouldn't think of it like that, I think of it as, you know, that, as this becomes a resiliency hub for Depot Bay, and you manage it through the city, that it can provide an example that then might create regional activity around it, right? If homeowners around go, wow, I like this, I'd like to put it here, or businesses around like it, or neighboring communities, which we saw interest in, in the Emergency Power Solutions Rally, start to go, wow, Depot Bay did this and it works, we'd like to do it too. So I think there could be some regional spinoff and sort of workforce development, um, although it's not directly, it's an indirect, you know, potential down-the-road thing, not a direct job generation from, from this project.
Yeah, we don't, I don't think any of us have anything to add to that, so. You guys are thinking way out of scale on us for future, so I think.
Well, we'll try and silver-tongue that as much as we can in the application. Alright, very good, uh, then the rest of it.
As far as the city's concerned, I think the next step would be to, uh, expand generation of hydrogen and, and, and provide a full-time supply, because the fuel cells will work in place, and all we really need to do is add the hydrogen supply. And so that would be the next step for the city, but this is only be for city operations, I wouldn't be.
Correct, yeah, okay. And I think that fits nicely into the whole story here, that this is a scalable solution, that it can reach out further into the community, that, that it really provides a, a great resilience hub, and I think that's one of the strengths of sort of the story, uh, of what we're doing here, is that, you know, for Depot Bay, this is not only a renewable energy project, it's an emergency response project, it's a community resilience project, and it's one that has the potential to grow and support other areas of the community during emergencies, and as we've talked about before, you know, if you have a seismic event or tsunami event, and the bridge gets cut down, you know, there's opportunity here for, you know, building resilience on both sides of the bridge and starting to grow that, and I think that, that's what's sort of neat about it, is it's, it's the, it's the start of something that could be very scalable if it succeeds. Uh, and then just looking at the community benefits, uh, we put some discussion in there about community benefits. Uh, one of the things that they talked about, uh, in the, in the sort of grant workshops at the start of this was that one of the weaknesses of some of the previous construction grants that caused them to fail was they had really good, they had technical plans on the project they wanted to build, but they didn't speak to the community value of it. And so we've added to the grant, and when we go through the grant application, I'll provide the draft, uh, is, is really a, a, an equity, um, framework, a planning, a plan of, of, of how this addresses environmental justice issues, as well as, as, as well as the sort of community emergency management. And the fact that, you know, the outreach that we've done already, uh, through events like the, uh, Emergency Power Solutions Rally, through, you know, regular discussions of this at City Hall, the fact that the, the city has now, by ordinance, created a, a energy advisory, uh, committee, all these things are really positive and, and, and look really good as far as the community being engaged and helping to, uh, to deliver really solutions here. Alright. Um, yeah, and so the, the other pieces are really this opinion of probable cost. Um, so the, the biggest pieces we still have to refine are, are, are sort of that equipment list with the warranty information, and then the cost pieces around that, and we're actively working on that now. I think otherwise, unless I hear anything different, I think the plan is sort of following what we had in the, in the planning grant, which I think again is a strong message to, to the state, saying, hey, we use your planning grant money wisely, and we're turning it into a, a real construction project that now we'd like some support, uh, as well on. So I think that that, that's a, a, that bodes well. Um, and like I say, the main things I think we're gonna need from your side are, Kimberly, Brady, and we should have a discussion about kind of how we tell the story around how it operates, right? Who, who's gonna operate it and how we train them, and, and that this city has expertise in operating equipment, you know? Um, so we need to write a little bit to that, we need the city's official authorization, which you'll do at the next town council meeting. Um, and then have however many letters of support we can get, right? Mainly being, uh, Central Lincoln, PUD, and then whatever other letters of support we can get. Uh, those things really help, and I think those are the big, uh, pieces where we need, need things from you right now.
So, Kim, who's got the action contacts, CLP, you be?
I have whatever you guys did last time, I think Joe and you were gonna do, so I have that contact information. So, I thought I would just send in a, a draft in Word, so they could just either monitor.
They've already, they've already agreed to it, now this is an enhancement of support, and what they're, what we're asking for now. Uh, with regards to a lot of this, uh, it's just the formality, Senator Gomber, Senator Jensen, all the political powerhouses that came to our, our meeting, uh, the energy summit, that would be, uh, requests for support.
Oh, absolutely, I was planning to do that, Joe, uh, Paul's gonna send me a list of the, the legislatures who attended, they didn't sign up one.
They didn't sign in, right, and I know that. Mayor Short ha- knew most of them, I have a, I'll send you a list, I'll send you a list of who I had, but I never did get a, a comprehensive list of the sort of, uh, political dignitaries that came in or contact information, so.
Well, I think, I think I remember saying that Congresswoman, that Boyle came, but Kathy, well, I don't have Kathy give me the list, and then she, uh, aggravated on saying, hey, send this critical letter out and ask them to do it, because they love Kathy, so.
Yeah, I'll, I'll send you that quick, I'll send you that list as soon as this calls over that I was able to dig up, but I was meaning to go through my files and see if I could find anybody who handed me a business card or anything, because I have this signup list, but the problem was those folks didn't really sign up, they came and sat at the front and didn't sign in.
No, we, I remember Kathy telling me, they had shown up, but she didn't make them sign in.
So, um, so Paul, I couldn't read the numbers on your, your pricing slide or guesstimating slide right now. Where, where are we ballpark?
Our total number is about six hundred and eighty, seven hundred thousand.
Okay, we don't wanna leave money on the table, this is probably our one shot. So as, as Scott and others, as Joe and others have said, we want to supersize the electrolyzer and, uh, perhaps the, uh, the wind and/or the solar size for the hydrogen generation.
I don't have the portable generator in that number, so I have to add that in there too. So, that number was just on the fixed components at City Hall, so we're gonna go through and refine it. Um, I think the way we maximize it is probably adding a little more storage. Uh, we don't wanna leave money on the table, but I also think that we don't wanna come in and write it a million either, because, uh, if we look at sort of the history of the grants, it's kind of looked a little bit suspiciously at people who just hit their number, right? I think we want an honest one, and we'll push it as close to that as possible.
So, for each portable fuel cell, go ahead and add like four, but for each one of those, put two or three of the three kilogram tanks with it.
Right.
And then.
Where is it gonna be stored when they're not in use? Are they gonna be stored in a container? Are we supposed to come up with another storage location for them?
So, that's a separate question. I think the, one of them with a pair of tanks will be stored at community center, because that's where it's gonna be used.
I think that the portable unit with a, a pair of tanks at the community center makes sense. I think the other tanks can be stored some at the container, and maybe an outside rack beside the container for, uh, safety reasons, you can store some tanks there.
You might be able to fit it in one of the caches. You might go in the cache.
They don't have any room in the caches, right, man? They're pretty full right now, but yeah, that's. Make it awesome, I guess.
So we're, we're actively, uh, gonna pursue a storage option on, um, that's not related directly to the grant right now. That would be, uh, something we're gonna address, and, uh, we will make sure that everyone is happy and it meets all the standard codes, especially with the NFPA. Uh, Paul has talked to the fire chief, and we'll make sure that every, uh, you know, authority is noted and understands we have storage of hydrogen, uh, as safe and stored as possible.
Absolutely, and, and like I say, there'll be, there'll be sensors and monitors, uh, included with sort of the stuff with the container, right? And, and one of the good things about hydrogen from a safety perspective is it's. And, and one of the good things about hydrogen from a safety perspective is it's, it escapes so rapidly and goes straight up because it's so light, right? So a lot of the safety mechanisms are actually just having the valve blow open. And, and once that happens, it's gone, right? It, it's part of the air and, and you don't end up with a, a localized fire that way. So a lot of the safety around it is just venting it quickly. So, so I think that as long as it's in proper ventilated conditions. It, it's, it's a really, it's a safe alternative.
Paul has a question, she had a good question that I'm sure has been addressed, I just don't remember what it was.
So does this construction grant include preparing the two facilities that this hydrogen cell power is going to be used at? Like converting it to have that capability or is that an outside cost and what does that cost?
No, that's part of it, it's just, it's, it's no different than a, a transfer switch. So if you think of, if you've ever seen people who have a, a portable generator at their house for backup power. Whether it be propane or natural gas, a Generac generator, people have probably seen them. There's all the only. Preparation that's needed and I got Scott, our Davis, our electrical super genius on the call. If I, because I'm probably going to say something wrong and he can yell at me. It's just a transfer switch, right? Is that you just, you wire it into your panel with a transfer switch and so. At the point when the power goes out, and this is one of the things, we don't need an interconnection agreement with the utility because we're totally isolated from them. That when the power goes out, you flick that switch and now the, the generator supplies the power into your panel and the grid's disconnected from it. And when the grid power comes back on, you flick that switch and your, your generation system is disconnected and it's just back to the way it was. Have I oversimplified that, Scott, or is that about right?
That, that's pretty much it, you just want to make sure that the, you minimize the load, so you relieve the stress, the, the. The fuel cell is going to be sized to handle the demand load, that's what we looked at for a year bills. But you, the more you minimize the load, the longer the, the gas tanks, the, the hydrogen tank will last. So.
Cool.
But that'll be up to you guys because it looks like we're going to take over the whole load of the building rather than trying to make an emergency power panel.
Correct, yeah, because the load of the building, I think we, we can cover it with eight kilowatts generators, so yeah. There's no reason to separate.
I think I may have seen a peak a little bit above the eight K, eight W at eight KW would be good, you can oversized inverter if you need to. And that way, if you have a spike that goes up momentarily, it can still handle it without. Mess with anything.
And that's if the batteries can help cover, is that right?
Yeah.
With the inverter, okay.
Well, I was thinking of the inverter from the fuel cell, the fuel cell generates DC.
Correct.
And it has, if it has a big enough inverter, it can take a surge from the AC unit coming on and off.
So don't fire up all the.
Not the AC unit, sorry, the heat unit, the fan on the heater unit. Don't think you want to run the AC on this one. But it can take the coffee pot too, yes, you'll be fine. Just go around and confiscate space heaters.
You don't need any of those either.
So the, the, the portable systems you're talking about like for the community center, did you say those were eight KW or four KW?
I gotta check what we sized that at. Scott, I don't remember off my, top of my.
I'd have to look at, I'd have to go look at it, I think one was eight KW, one was twelve KW. Depended on what it, what, what was there, but I can't remember which was which.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I would guess City Hall is the higher one. It's a bigger building, but. Okay, I mean, is, is it possible to come up with a, a costing for an AKW portable system with X number of tanks? To show as a, as a scalable solution that, you know. If we're, you know, depending on what the, the bottom line costing comes in, we could just add X number of AKW systems, portable systems?
I mean, I, I guess that's possible, we put that in the grant. Like I say, our objective is to do City Hall and the community center first and the community center with a portable system. But once we costed the portable system at community, at the community center and have our total budget, we'll see if there's room for a second one, we'll, we can propose a second one, I don't see a problem with that.
Right, because I, I mean, well, I have been talking to the fire chief and they're very interested in, in a backup system for, they're using diesel generators right now. And, and they don't even own the generators, they're owned by telecoms that they have an agreement with. So they have a, a need to, and you know. You know, I know during the O D O E conference last time, the question was asked whether a, a entity could submit multiple phase two proposals. And so I, I doubt we've got enough time to, to do that anymore.
You, you can, but, but. I don't think we have time, but I also think this, there's something to be said about the strength of your proposal. I doubt very much one community is going to get two, given the amount of money that's left in the pot. And I think that the strength of your proposal is stronger if it follows your, the money they already spent on a planning grant, right? So it shows good stewardship of their money, a continuation of something that they've already thought was a good idea, you know? And I, so I think that's a much stronger way of doing it and if we have space to put an extra portable on there. That probably is, is, is something that is a good, a good idea and could work. I, I think having competing construction grants is probably not in your favor.
Okay, but just make a note that we want, we want a price for a portable system.
No, no, absolutely.
Roll up, so whether it's in the grant or not, we still need to. Okay.
We could page through the grant application, but it doesn't sound like we really need to. Those are sort of the big pieces and. And happy to share a draft later in, you know, later in the week as we get through it further.
Yeah, we, we definitely, this committee would definitely have to see a draft before the nineteenth, so.
No, absolutely, absolutely, we're happy, we're happy to share that, like I say, later by the, by the end of the week, I would think is.